We have two appointments at 7:15.
And we have Mr. Travis Fawley, the Recreation Director, giving us his monthly dissertation. And we will begin tonight at 7:00, right after our pledge, with the Winter Concert Committee announcing their winter concert schedules. So with that said, I'd like to have us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silent prayer or meditation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all, and please be seated. As I mentioned a minute ago, we will start at this evening's appointments with the Winter Concert Committee. David, would you like to introduce yourself and the young lady next to you when we get going? We know Mr. Cooper.
Okay, sure. I'm Dave Tuttel. I'm a member of the Norwood Concerts on the Common Committee, which normally does summer concerts, but a few years back, we started doing a series of winter concerts up at the high school. Seated next to me is Patricia Schick, who's also on the committee and helps us out each and every Sunday when we have a concert. We wanted to take a few minutes tonight just to remind everybody and give you our agenda for this year. The concerts start this coming Sunday on the 26th. The times are 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. And again, they're at the Norwood High School. And they run for four Sundays in a row. So first, we have the Randolph Community Band. Then on February 2nd, Super Bowl Sunday, we have Dan Gable and the Abletones. On February 9th, we have the Roy Scott Big Band. And on February 16th, we close out the season with the Tom Nutley Big Band. At each concert, we also have a free raffle, which is a gift certificate to one of the local restaurants who are sponsors. We usually give away two of those. We do something special around Valentine's Day, so you've got to come out and see what that is. The concerts are free and open to everybody, and we hope everybody watching and listening will make an effort to come on out.
In addition to that, if I could add, during the halftime, we also have coffee and hot chocolate available to the patrons, as well as
That's correct.
various assortment of pastries.
Yep, that's correct.
All free.
And it's all free.
It's all free. Everything is free.
Now, on February 2nd, a Super Bowl Sunday, up until 4:00, so people should have enough time, if they choose, I believe, to go to the concerts and still get home in time to watch a game.
Well, they will if they choose to. I mean, the Patriots aren't in it, so, you know.
There's still a lot of people interested.
Yeah.
Anything from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Folks, I just want to say welcome back once more. Nine years now, I've had the pleasure of welcoming you guys to meetings for these concerts and attending quite a few of the big band mainly concerts, which are so much fun, so much fun. And I hope, we get a good crowd in the wintertime. It's as cold or snowy as it is, the people do come out pretty well. But we could entertain a few more, I think. But we really appreciate the volunteers, really do. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You know, you're right, Mr. Howard. We get about 200 people in the winter, which is down just a little bit from what we get in the summer on the Common, but it is a good crowd when you consider the weather in February.
But the hall does hold 700, so we have room. So we have room. We have room, and it's very comfortable in those seats, very comfortable. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Mr. Maloney, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just great to see you guys again. Glad to see that we're doing the program for another winter. Especially look forward to seeing Dan Gable and the Abletones on Super Bowl Sunday. They're an outstanding group. Although the Randolph Community Band last year was fabulous in their show. But anyway, look forward to it. These are some old reliables. They're all good, and it's definitely a worthwhile take. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Mr. Haja, sir?
Mr. Chairman, so congratulations on putting this together for another year. The way I look at it is another activity put on by great volunteers for this great town, something else for people to do and go to in this town. So my congratulations to you for putting it for another year. So I know they're great.
Thank you.
Mr. Plasko, David?
Just another big thank you. Go to several of them each winter and give out a little bit of that coffee. And the people really appreciate it and enjoy themselves. And the more we can speak it, talk it up, so that, as you people have been talking about, some more come out and enjoy, the better it'll be for everyone to participate. But it's a great time, and it's all about volunteers making it happen. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
David, if I could, I think the weather's going to be fairly good on Sunday. It should be in the 40s.
Right.
We shouldn't have a problem as far as ice or any other condition. If you would, I would just like you to explain to the people, the pastries, the coffee, the hot chocolate are donated by whom?
The pastries and everything comes from Roach Brothers. And the coffee and hot chocolate, I believe, comes from Honeydew. Honeydew Donuts, right here in Norwood. And there's plenty for everybody, so come on up. It's all free, again. And we appreciate the board's help. Many of the members have come up and helped out, and we appreciate that when you stop by.
And a few of us will be there again on Sunday.
Good.
I'll show you that.
I'd like to acknowledge our first donation of this new year from Paul and Catherine Bishop. Thank you. A couple of quick things. The committee needs, we're looking for volunteers. If people are interested, please contact us. Come to the concert, speak to any one of us. Other committee members will be present. So we look forward, we want to expand our committee's membership. Weather is, as you mentioned, this Sunday is hopefully a good day. But if for any reason there's a cancellation, we will, we don't actually call the concerts. We don't make that decision until sometime Sunday morning. So we will try to announce it on our website and through social media. There's no easy way to notify people on short notice, but hopefully that won't be necessary.
We could do it like you used to do. Put the streetlights on at 6:00 o'clock in the morning.
While the fire was. We look forward to seeing the members of the board there.
Okay, if I could just touch on one thing. You talked about the Bishop family being the first donation of the Winter Concert Series. I'd like to think I was late on the summer concert series, and that's why I'm doing that tonight.
Well, thank you very much.
I apologize for being late, but nonetheless, you have it. So thank you all for what you do.
Thank you.
And we'll be there to support you over the next four weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Travis Fawley, Recreation Director, has a monthly report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate the time. To explain what we've got coming up in the rec world over the last month and what we have upcoming, kind of delving right in. The holiday programming that we held in December on was a big success. We held about 14 programs altogether. We had probably around 228 participants, not including everybody that came out for the extravaganza. We held a Breakfast with Santa event, cookie decorating, snow. We actually went snow tubing in Shoba. Holiday, and we did, actually did a holiday vacation program as well. So we had a very busy Christmas vacation here, holiday vacation at the rec. Parasite Out. We held our second Parasite Out on Friday, December 13th. We had about 26 participants. We're going to be holding our next one on February 14th from 6:00 to 8:30 for grades 1 through 5 for $10 a child. So if you're looking for a night out as a parent and then want to drop your kids off in the civic, please feel free to do so. We just kicked off our January programming. So we, another round of programming that started in early January. We had about 30 programs start with almost 300, or a little over 300 participants in all the programs altogether. Programs range from moving groove to preschool prep to sports to STEM to Kids Cook and Intro to Theater. There is still space available, so if you did miss any, feel free to contact us at the Civic Center, and we're happy to find something and hopefully get you in any program you want. Some upcoming programs that we have coming up. We have our annual father-daughter. It's now the Ties and Tiara Dance on Friday, February 7th, from 6:30 to 8:30. It is $15 a couple and $5 for every child above that. The dance will include a DJ, photo booth, music, refreshments. It's a fun event. I mean, we usually get around 200 couples that come. It's a huge event. It's a lot of fun. The fathers and daughters all have fun. It is a blast. We are hosting our second annual Winter Carnival on Saturday, March 7th. A big shout out to Dedham Savings Bank and Mr. Benson for being our sponsor for this event. Couldn't have done it without them. And this event is actually in partnership with the Junior Women's Club as well. Part of the proceeds from that event will go to the Junior Women's Club. They help us out volunteer, they market, they help us market. And it is a lot of fun. We had a really good outpouring last year for it. We're hoping to get another good turnout this summer, this winter as well.
What happens at the Winter Carnival?
Oh, yes, I apologize. So the Winter Carnival is your typical carnival. We have multiple carnival games, face painting, prizes, refreshments. And it is, at $10 per child, it is a lot of fun. It's in the civic center. Yep, I apologize, I should have been a little more specific with that.
I was trying to picture it outside of the municipal parking lot. It's just whatever.
Yes, it would not be fun outside. So everything's in the gymnasium, and we fill it up with inflatables, carnival games, like I said, face painting, music. And it is a lot of fun. And the kids had a blast last year. We kind of timed it right with the weather. It was not a great day, so we had a huge outpouring. And the Junior Women's Club does a great job helping us market and getting the word out about it. So it actually worked out really, really well. And moving on to our next one, this is something that Katie Seestad has worked really hard with, with Impact Nord, is Saturday, March 21st. Also at the Civic Center and the gymnasium, we're hosting our second annual community dodgeball tournament. Last year was a big hit. We had a lot of people from all different aspects of the community, old, young, come out and join us. It's $5 a person. The tournament, like I said, is on Saturday, March 21st. It's a lot of fun. All the proceeds go to Impact Nord. It's a great event that we enjoy being a part of and helping run. And lastly, from our program standpoint, if you are sticking around on February vacation, we still have a lot of space available. So if you're looking to do a staycation for February vacation and you're looking to do some fun stuff with your little guys and as adults in the rec world, please come join us at the civic. We have everything from art programs to sports classes to STEM to a princess tea party, toe jam, pub event. There's always a big thing we have in the gym. It's a free event that we usually run on Friday of February vacation. It's just a kid's concert that we run. It is a blast. It is a lot of fun. So we still have a lot of space available for February vacation as well. And a lot of folks are still trying to get through their New Year's resolutions. If you're looking to join us for any fitness classes, we still have a multitude of fitness classes that we're offering at the civic center. You can pay by the class or by multiple classes. We have spin, yoga, just a variety of fitness classes that you can try at the civic as well. So keep busy in that respect as well. Annual, our annual report, this is something we haven't really done before. This is something our department worked hard on between me, Katie Howie, and Lee Kennedy. We put it together. It's kind of, we always put our annual report in the town meeting booklet, but this is kind of a more of a snapshot of everything that we've done over the last few years, a kind of a, an overview of what we've done. We tried to make it colorful, interactive. The amount of people that we've had participate in our programs, to estimated guests for special events, to energy savings projects, to civic, the civic center gymnasium updates. We try to make it really fun, really colorful, easy to read, easy to follow. And we also have some of our infrastructure improvements over the last three years as well. If you are interested in seeing this document, it's actually on the Town Rec, Town Rec page. It's under, annual report under Recreation page. So it is available to the public if you want to view it. I would encourage people to do it. It really is, we try to make it, this is something we like to do every year and build on. It's just kind of a snapshot of everything we've done over the last few years and what we've done this year.
So distribution is online, that's what you're?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
So it's
Again, that's on the recreational website.
Correct.
I think it's a very informative piece of information here. There's very few pages, but you have a lot of documentation on here. A lot of numbers and so on and so on. Very interesting.
Thank you, Paul. I appreciate it.
I would encourage everybody to go out and see if they could get that online and look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the Winter Carnival, Travis.
Yep.
$10 per child. Does that include all games and activities?
Everything.
No additional costs?
Once you pay the $10, you go in and you can play as many games as you want.
That's what it's concerned about.
We had kids, I think, I don't know the time off the top of my head. I think it's a two or three hour event. We had families stay there for two or three hours last night.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It was a blast. And they collect tickets, and then they, we get prizes out at the end. So kids, if you participate in all the carnival games, we'll get prizes at the end as well.
And that's March 7th?
Yes, correct.
And the dodgeball, now, is that teams or what is it?
So we take all the registrations individually, and then we make teams. We try to blend the community members together, between high school and department members and residents. It's kind of a mix of, a mixed bag of everybody. We try to make, blend everybody together, so it becomes kind of a true community event.
Approximately how many on the teams?
That I
Very?
It can vary. It can vary.
Depending on the registrants.
Exactly.
Got you, got you. But a fun event.
Fun event.
And you could take out your aggression, I think.
Yes, if you're across from the sidelines from a town employee you're not very fond of, you can take your aggression out on them.
You just have to worry about the young guns who throw football or baseball fast as you can believe it.
Or dodgeball.
Well, and then they take that dodgeball and it's coming at you like it 50 miles an hour. Look out.
We do have some members of the baseball team that were there last year that can throw the ball really, really hard. So yeah, I would not want to be on the receiving end of one of those dodgeballs. They aren't the gator balls. They're not the rubber balls that you think of in gym class, though. They are the gator softer balls, but it still doesn't feel any better when you get hit by them.
What do you mean by a gator softball?
It's a type of dodgeball. The old rubber balls
Is it a bigger ball than
It's just a squishier ball. It's designed to not hurt as much. The old rubber balls that you used to use in gym class, you usually leave the welts when you get hit by them.
They were fun.
Yeah. These are a little bit softer, softer, so it won't hurt as much.
Travis, thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Plasko, you had a comment?
Yeah, it was a little uneasy when you were talking about exercising. I mean, you seemed to be looking at me a lot. Maybe I misread that. Yeah, I actually want to hear some concerns. I guess I would request that the monthly reports have a little more meat going over all these activities. It's great, particularly for the public to know what's coming up and to be able to get their kids or whoever to participate in them. But I've been reading some things in the newspaper or seeing some things on local TV lately that concern me that there seems to be things that are more business meaningful to the department, but we don't hear about them up here. At least, I don't think I do. You know, if we have projects going on, it'd be nice to get an update how they're, how they're proceeding. If we have, department has needs, and you're going to be making proposals, and it's going to be going to, say, the Capitolway Committee, it'd be nice if instead of when it came to budget time, we heard about it, that we knew about it in advance and why you're proposing it, and maybe it could be behind you in supporting it.
Okay.
Which is our role. We are the park recreation commissioners. It'd be nice to be able to be a little more involved in your needs and some more support above you. But we can't if we don't get that input, that information to us. And also, it seems to me that there's been some requests going to the CPA in particular, that, again, if I wasn't elected CPA, would know nothing about them. And yet they have to do with our rec department, our fields, our property, that technically we're in charge of, and we should know something about them ahead of time and not after the fact. So maybe we, as great as this stuff is for the public, as I mentioned, maybe a little more of this other stuff as it's going on to keep us informed and get our support.
Yes. I can make sure that's included in the report. That's not a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you had nothing, Mr. Jai?
No, nothing.
Sir?
Just one question.
Certainly, go ahead, sir.
The Father Max Pool Feasibility Group is meeting Monday night, right?
Correct.
Okay, good. 6:00.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Okay, that'll bring us to a new business, and I'll start with number one. The Morse House applications are in. Our Morse House located at 1285 Washington Street. We have three applications. Patty Bailey of 37 St. John Avenue requesting March 29, 2020, from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m. for a private event. And B, Norwood Republican Town Committee on the third Wednesday of every month from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. from January 22nd until December 16th for meetings. And lastly, Matt McKee, the Ponce Valley Sunrise Rotary, requesting October 31st, 2020, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. to hold a No Scare Haunted House attraction. It will be set up on October 29th and 30th, and the cleanup will take place on October 31st. Mr. Plasko?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that, speaking for myself, we had wanted to continue the discussions we had, and I think we asked Mr. Jai and/or the general manager together, I think, to come back with some charges, that we felt that there should be charges for the use of this building in at least some cases. Tonight, we got these applications, but we also just got even a draft of what those charges were. We haven't had a chance to have any meaningful discussion of them. I think there's enough lead time in all of these except for B, which is scheduled for tomorrow night. So I would like to try to make a motion to permit January 22nd use for the Republican Town Committee and table the rest until we have a discussion of charges and the request, whether it be next week or whenever.
Second. On that, Mr. Howard, did you have something?
Well, I don't know. You don't want to talk about the charges tonight?
Well, it wasn't actually on the agenda, the charge, if you want to. I guess we could, but I thought we'd take a week to think about it.
Yeah, I'd rather than get a dissertation back and forth here for an hour or 45 minutes or whatever, I'd rather have us look at the document that we just received 15 to 20 minutes ago and come up with some thoughts and bring it back to another meeting and discuss it when we have something to discuss. Mr.?
No, I was going to say that. That's fair. We have a motion. We have somebody who wants, who's applying to use it tomorrow night. Let them use it at no charge. But next week, we'll, I think you're right, put it on the agenda for next week so the public can see that we're going to discuss it, and we'll take it up then. And everybody subsequent to that will pay, will pay charges.
Okay, and that motion, anything else? Okay, I have a motion in a second to take up, B, it is, Norwood Republican Town Committee.
For tomorrow.
For tomorrow night, and let that go forward. The rest will be held in abeyance until an appropriate date in the future. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Number two, Sarah Cullen, Norwood League of Women Voters, submitting application to use the town common on Saturday, June 2nd, 2020, from 9:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. for a fundraiser, I'm sorry, fundraising yard sale. Motion?
Motion approved. Second?
I have a motion approved in a second.
On the motion?
On the motion, sir.
Will she actually be submitting an actual application for, just for the files so that everyone, so that they all are the same?
Clerk is answering in the affirmative.
Thank you.
Do we have a sound with the clerk?
No.
Yeah.
So I have a motion in a second, if that's it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Number three? Sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
They're there for a yard sale. There's no, they're cleaning up after themselves, I presume, so there's no need for
There will be
any type of custodial work after the fact, because I presume they're going to take up a good piece of the town common. I just want to make sure we're all covered here, that's all.
No, according to the clerk, Mrs. Malville Hill, the application will be filed appropriately. And if there is anything left over, if there's broken chairs or whatever that might be shown about the area, they will be charged appropriately.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That suits your needs. So we voted on that, and that's all set. Number three, David Dupree, Norwood Space Center, 85 Moore Street, submitting request for a one-day wine malt beverage license for Friday, March 13, 2020, from 6:30 p.m. until 11:00 p.m.
Motion approved.
That is for a function. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Number four, Mary Pichetti, Massachusetts School Building Authority, submitting Coakley Middle School Study Enrollment Certificate.
Question, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely, sir.
Let me get this. There's a date on this thing that we're supposed to respond, and it's coming up fast, real fast, like a few days. Where did I see it? I want to say the 20-something of this month. All right, 21 calendar days. Please sign and return the attached certification within 21 calendar days. So that's, excuse me, that's the 27th.
Superintendent and I are taking care of it.
No, but just so we don't miss the date. I mean, you know, the 27th, they have to receive it.
Support of this? Correct. This is one of many steps in the school building process.
Mr. Plasko, did you have anything else to add?
I was going to say, I read it, and it seemed fine to me, but I'm not part of that committee. So I was going to ask our committee members or the town manager if they generally feel this is appropriate to sign off on, that it reflects what our understanding is. And if it is, and if it is, can I authorize and direct the general manager to sign?
Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I serve on the committee. Basically, what the, what you're hearing here from the SBA is that they have, they have done a survey of enrollment for the, for all 12 grades in the town, particularly concentrating on grades 6 through 8, as you see. And because we are interested in a middle school that would encompass grades 5 through 8, they've done an analysis of, they've done a projection of headcount in grades 5 through 8 out through the school year 2930, 2029 to 2030. The point is that if, as a result of incorporating grades 5 into a brand-new middle school, we are left with excess capacity in the elementary schools, the SBA might not agree to fund the grade 5 portion of the new building, okay? So they might just say, we'll fund grades 6 through 8, we will not participate in grade 5, because in incorporating that, you'll be left with excess capacity in your elementary schools. So that's sort of the next part of the analysis. And Superintendent Thompson's going into the SBA for the two weeks, and Mr. Slater, the chairman of the community, is going in as well. But that's sort of the main point of the document you have here.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Howard?
Once more. It's got to be in the mail by the 27th.
So let's authorize and direct the General Manager to sign it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to have the General Manager take control of this. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. That brings us to our next item on new business. Massachusetts State Lottery Commission Charitable Gaming Division submitting annual BNO report for St. Catherine's of Santa Ana Parish, located at 547 Washington Street.
Information.
Second.
I have a motion for information.
On the, on the?
On the motion, sir?
Thank you, just a note here for St. Catherine's. They will be contributing between the net income from this year's BNO proceeds and monies that they've retained from past years, about $61,200 directly into the school, the St. Catherine's school. So it does, the game does generate quite a bit of revenue for the school.
Thank you, sir, for that.
Thank you.
So I have a motion for information and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number six, Paul Halakiotis, Director of Community Planning and Economic Development for the Town of Norwood, submitting subsidized housing inventory. Questions for the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Just a note, Mr. Halakiotis is giving us notification that several of the developments that have deed restrictions on them, the deed restrictions are due to expire at some point in time. Most are, will be held in perpetuity, and that was the agreement. But on this list, we have 1, 2, 3, 4 of them that will expire in time. Two of those 4 will expire in the year 2022. So that's coming up fairly quickly. It's a total of 15 units between those two complexes, but it might have some impact on housing policy as we move forward. The other thing to notice, I was talking to Mr. Mizoko about this, we look at subsidized housing inventory. When you have an apartment complex, every single unit in that complex is counted in your subsidized housing inventory, but in condominiums, only those units that are affordable are counted in the SHI Act. So maybe, I don't, maybe it's something I did know once and forgot, but it's kind of an important thing to know when you contemplate what kind of property you want in your home, if you're thinking about subsidized housing inventory. Thank you.
Mr. Howard, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Am I right that, in reading this, that our percentage on this letter is 9.88%?
As of today.
As of, yeah, as of this day and time, as of compared to 1.5 being the requirement?
No.
No, you have two requirements you can meet to be in the so-called safe harbor. 10%, which we just Jai of.
Of housing.
Or 1.5, which we.
Of land.
Are clearly in excess of.
What's our, they don't give us a 1.5?
No, they don't, they only talk about units.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought. I figured that was so high that it was relating to the 10%. That's disappointing.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Actually, though, Mr. Plasko, 9.88 is a lot closer than we've been as a result of Avalon. I mean, we're just about at the 10%. I mean, one of the things we might want to consider, and this is down the road, I understand, but I know in some towns, you'll, there'll be a bylaw which requires that new developments include something over 10%, say 12%, I believe in one neighbor in town, to be affordable housing, so that you can, you get to and then always stay above that 10%, if that's a goal. We've got, we're very good in safe harbor on the 1.5 or 1.68 now, but the legislature could rewrite that, and it could be changed with a stroke of a pen in time. So it might be worthwhile, with that close to the 10%, to get there and stay above it. Thank you.
Mr. Plasko?
I think Mr. Halakiotis's comment is that we should, as a community, be paying attention to that and still taking strides to increase our units that qualify under the 40B law for all kinds of reasons, but just for meeting the law, because we're at the 9.88 today, as I said, today, because as soon as we have the new census, since 2020 census comes out, we're likely to drop, because it'll now include all the units that have been built over the last 10 years, and that'll drop our percentage. Also, some land may go off, as you mentioned, or it's conceivable that the HCD changes their regulations. Some of the things we're getting credit for today aren't specifically in the law, but are in the regulations. So while we're feeling comfortable today, you never know what tomorrow is, and it's probably a good goal to keep working away. If we work away at it, we can support ICOL and other people who've called boutique developments, small scattered developments, and therefore, we don't have to necessarily face large developments that people find objectionable, and yet we still work towards getting to those goals.
Just to piggyback, because I agree with everything that my colleague said, touching on the points. I think we need to take a long-term, two-pronged approach to this, is attacking both numbers to ensure that we stay ahead of the 1.5 as best we can and even higher, because it is just a regulation, and they could change it, and then, you know, tomorrow we might get two-year cover to do it. So I never trust the D H C D with regards to helping out cities and towns. They do great for individuals, and that's their primary purpose, so they're going to do what they can do to help them. But the 9.88, it is, we're so close, probably have been that way for a long time. And then, right, the new census, it'll be interesting what that number is when the new census figures come out. And then I think we could develop, like Mr. Maloney said, a plan on how we can get to the 10% with the planning department and Paul through Tony. But I think it's a two-pronged approach here going forward. I think we should still continue to try to buy land and build that 1.5 as high as we can in case things fall off or something. We have opportunities coming up, we all know that, and we need to take advantage of that situation.
Just one more thing.
Thank you, Mr. Jai, Mr. Maloney.
One, in talking about extending the deed restrictions from those that expire in a couple of years, Mr. Halakiotis did make an interesting point in his letter. He said, to quote, "Some communities have successfully used CPA money to pay the owner to extend the deed restriction," unquote. I don't know if that's a good idea, but I never would have thought of it on my own, so I'm glad he did.
Yeah, he said he plans on pursuing that strategy. It will be interesting to see what that cost may be, whether it's the price to pay to stay there.
It's, it's, those are just 15 units for those to develop.
It's interesting whether we need to do that, depending on what the cost might be, because those units in the area are very small, so they won't come near affecting our 1.5 situation.
Yeah.
That's what you have to evaluate, is the impact of not paying.
Okay. Just before the questions, can we take this?
Do you need a motion to file?
I have a motion to file, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to file and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number seven, Mary Jane Handy, Director of Accounts, Massachusetts Department of Revenue, submitting notification of the Town of Norwood's free cash approval, which is $3,414,849.
Information.
Second, on the motion?
On the motion, sir.
Mr. Chairman, that number is actually right there in the sweet spot for our 10- or 12-year average for free cash. It oscillates, as you know, but 3.5 is about our average for the last decade.
Very good, thank you. So I have a motion for information, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number eight, Mary Lou Folen, Town Clerk, No-er Town Clerk, submitting notification that she has, she is in receipt of a letter from Deborah Homewood dated January 8, 2020, resigning from the planning board effective immediately. There are two years left on her term, yet the board wishes to place this position on the April ballot. They must inform the town clerk's office prior to February 3, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Like, we just emphasized for the public that what just happened, a member resigned from the planning board, and there's two years left on the term, and we put it on this April's ballot, so people have until February 15th to decide that they are interested in running and getting nomination papers and submitting them with the town clerk to have your name on the ballot for this April to fill that position, anyone interested, just so that doesn't get skipped over. Want to emphasize that, thank you.
I believe it's the 18th of February.
I'm sorry?
18th of February.
18th, thank you, not the 15th, the 18th.
So you just picked up three more days.
Yep.
I'm sorry, just question, how many years remaining on that term? Two?
Two.
Thank you.
We have completed the first of three.
Thanks.
If I could just take some executive privilege on this notification, we also have a notification from Mr. Paul Halakiotis, who would like to schedule a meeting with the selectmen in the planning board to elect or actually appoint a planning board member to serve on a temporary basis until April local election. What I would like to do is do this as quickly as possible, and if nobody has any objections, possibly next Tuesday, we could sit down and meet with them to appoint a temporary until such time as the election comes forward.
So moved.
Second.
Everybody understand that?
Yep.
Send the letter to the planning board, as said?
In the last line, I was, please let the planning board know we can meet with the selectmen, and I would ask Mrs. Malville-Hill to notify them that we intend to meet next Tuesday with them. With that said, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Moving on again, number nine, discussion of board titles. The Board of Selectmen are Select Board, which should we be known as? Mr. Plasko?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I briefly mentioned that and asked that it be brought up for some discussion. Approximately two years ago, one of the local newspapers, or maybe it was both, I forget, did an article about this topic. It was starting to raise its head around the state, and so locally, they asked us about it. And I, and I think most of us at the time, saw no need for the change, the name, or to stop using words that have been generally accepted for hundreds of years and their intended meaning versus the literal meaning. And I admit that I don't believe it's yet, we have yet seen signs that this is a priority in town, but I also do believe that much has changed over these few years. Many towns in the Commonwealth have already changed this name from Board of Selectmen to Select Board. Approximately a third of the towns have already done this. The, as I mentioned in our, this week, we have the Massachusetts Municipal Association's Annual Meeting and the Annual Selectmen's Association Meeting. And for a couple of years now, the Mass Municipal Association has already dropped reference to the term Board of Selectmen and referred to it as the Select Board. The Massachusetts Selectmen's Association, at its annual meeting, we will discuss Saturday morning, is proposing to change its bylaws so that it will be known as the Massachusetts Select Board Association, and changing the different sections appropriately to support that throughout the document. So things are changing. You know, I have 11 granddaughters, and I think about their future every day. And I was moved by a conversation last month I had with my 12-year-old granddaughter Maggie. An old boy with a whole discussion, but at the end of the discussion, she said, she would, she said that they should allow women to be selectmen, because they could get things done. Well, I explained to her that women can be on the board, and that Norwood has had four. Actually, think about that, we've only had four, even though we've had 78 selectmen in total. But this started to make me think that, you know, what selectmen does mean to young girls and to women, and that it excludes them, and they feel excluded by the use of the term. We certainly have been moving to more gender-neutral titles in our society. We've changed from, we used to have policemen, today we have police officers. We used to have firemen, today we have firefighters. These terms better reflect a commitment to our inclusivity and diversity. Respectfully, I do believe that words matter. Words shape perceptions and perceptions of power. The 21st century is an age of inclusion and diversity, and it's time we find out if the townspeople are ready for this change or not. So I would propose that we consider going to a non-binding public advisory question on the April 6 town election in accordance with Master in Law, Chapter 53, 18A, and put it out there for discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko, Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am not against personally something like this, and I concur with a lot of what Mr. Plasko said. But I think this is an issue for this board to vote on, not the townspeople. But I would say this, I think it should be brought up when the two new members are seated on this board at that time. I don't think it should be, should be voted even for referendum before the election. I think that the two new members, which is almost, you know, of course, it isn't three out of five, but I think it's important to get their input, the new members, because they're going to be on the board for three years. And I really, I really believe that they should be part of the discussion.
Mr. Plasko, with that?
Yeah, if I might respond to that, thank you. This subject, if it goes any further, is not a subject decided by the board. This has to be a permanent legal change, if it's to be made. State law actually only refers to selectmen in hundreds of places, thousands of places, probably. And the definition is the towns shall have a Board of Selectmen. But towns go through the legal process, whether it's a home rule petition, a, in our case, we have a special, we don't really have a charter. We have a so-called, we have a special act that is our so-called charter. And you go in and you amend that special act, and then you have a law that says, in Norwood, you have a Board of, called the Board, the Select Board instead of the Board of Selectmen and so forth, you make that change. But to make that change, it has to be the townspeople or a town meeting that decides, and it has to then go to the legislature who have to approve it. But it gets the support of the public, the legislature wants to know how the public feel. If you want the home rule petition, that goes to a townwide ballot question a year from now anyhow. So this would be a method of, you would see how the people feel. If they're totally opposed to it, I would assume we would drop it. If they're strongly in favor of it, I would assume we would go through the process of getting a town meeting article together, make the proper changes in the documents. If town meeting then approves it, go to the legislature. So the board certainly has a say, as we are tonight, and we would be deciding certainly what process to go forward. But the ultimate decision hasn't, is not ours at all. It's the townspeople, and they're choosing to change in simple terms our charter. And it's a different legal change, it's not just a use of name change.
Anything else?
That said at the moment.
I understand Mr. Howard's concern about the fact that 40% of this board will be leaving here in 10 weeks' time, and he would like to have a new board make this decision. But although it's not written in granite in state law, state law does allude to the fact that it should be something that is decided by the people. So I would, I would go along with Mr. Plasko on that one.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Was, as one who probably earns too much on the side of history and tradition, I would be probably sorry to see the term go, because encoded in the term "selectmen" is 400-year history of representative government on these shores, going back to the earliest villages. The term is pretty much exclusive to New England, and it was originally "select vestreman," because the original villages and townships were centered around the churches. And then as the world became more secular and expanded, they shortened the term to "selectmen," so. I don't see the practical benefit of changing it. I mean, I don't, I guess I don't mind putting it on, putting it out of the, as a plebiscite. I don't, however, see the practical benefit. I don't, I don't really agree with Mr. Plasko that you people are going to feel like they're excluded by it. Everybody knows a woman can be on the Board of Selectmen. The English language does have its defects and its peculiarities. That's probably why it's a killer language, and everyone in the world speaks it. It just, it just has appeal to everybody. But I admit, I mean, that's, you know, in the early days, selectmen referred to men, they were, they were men. And now we, we have, the sex and the species are the same term, so. But anyway, I tell you, the only, the only thing I have, Mr. Plasko, if you want to pursue this, I, I'm not really crazy about a non-binding referendum. And maybe it's just me, and I'm not, I'm not trying to forestall something if it's inevitable, fine, but we did, we did have a non-binding referendum on a matter pertaining to the school department calendar six years ago or so. 75% of the people of the town voted in favor, and the result was ignored. And the justification by the school committee at that time, and none of, none of the current members were on the board then, but the justification was that, well, the turnout was 18%. 75% of them voted in favor of the initiative, therefore, it was a total of 14% of the townspeople who felt that the calendar should be changed, and the 86% either didn't or were silent, therefore, it's not a sufficient sample. I think if you want to put it on the ballot, if we're allowed to do it, we should just do it as a binding referendum. And just say, this is it, you want to change it, yes or no?
Shame on the 86%, by the way. Let Phil take action. Mr. Plasko, with that?
Thank you. First of all, there isn't a binding referendum, so we can't do that. The only referendum, yes, the only referendum is a non-binding opinion referendum. There are binding referendums at the state level, but not here at the local level. And editorial-wise, I think that last case was some strong vocal advocates asked for a referendum, and this board allowed it. I voted against it, because I didn't think it was proper to be there, and that the school committee was necessarily going to be bound by it. But this is a slightly different issue, I think. We're looking for the public's input, and we may very well move forward, as I mentioned earlier, be moved forward or take no action, depending on what the strength of that is. The other way we can do it is ignore what, don't bring it up and don't go forward at all, or go to town meeting, make the changes, do the work, a lot of work, to make the recommended changes, because we're going to read these documents and change every reference to them everywhere, and then petition the legislature to make that change. And town meeting votes it the way we change the town clerk and accounts office, the way we change the treasurer's office, We do the same steps we have done. But that eliminates, as I, as I admitted myself, there has yet to be any real pressing issue in town. You haven't heard it from a lot of people, I've heard it from some. I haven't heard it from everybody. But all around us, it's happening. It's happening in a third of the towns already, and it's probably, I looked online, I think that I saw seven, eight, seven of them, that are pending at the house right now for approval. As I mentioned, the MMA is doing it, our own Selectmen's Association is doing it. Seems like time to talk about it. And why not talk to the public and see how they feel instead of making a decision inclusively ourselves?
Well, you said we can't make it inclusively ourselves, right?
Well, the decision, the decision whether to even go further and do anything about it.
Right, okay. So, so the alternative would be the non-binding referendum will go to town meeting and ask them to decide it now?
Let, let town meeting decide without any input. If you do, if you do the referendum in April, you could then go to a town meeting quickly afterwards, and town meeting knows how the, the public feels. Otherwise, they are supposed to be representative of the town, but it's a smaller body trying to make that decision. You could do it either way. I just thought it'd be good to find out how the people feel.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Haja.
Yeah, so I'm torn in this, and I've been thinking about it ever since it was put on, on the agenda. One, I think like so many other issues across this country, we, certain individuals look at the history and they just want to turn it all around. You know, the intent of the use of the phrase "selectmen," as Tom mentioned, wasn't to make it, you know, just men, just women, just anything that you want. That, that was the phrase that was created and shortened, meaning the leaders of the community, and it came out "a selectmen." So for those that are now turning it into a gender issue, you know, to me, that's problematic. I hate that we're turning these history matters into whether everything is gender neutral. Number two, the, the non-binding referendum, you know, I'm, while I agree it's great probably to go out to them and ask, I, I would wonder how members are going to feel if we get a 16% turnout and 63% of the people say, yes, let's change it. Is that a really overwhelming consensus of the towns or just those that are interested in voting? You would like to think that you'd get very, very high turnout? We don't seem to get that. I, I'm not sure that that's really the, the best way to judge whether the townspeople feel that changing the selectmen title that's been around for really hundreds and hundreds of years across New England is the right way to deal with it. I do like town meeting because that's where you get the people that are actually active and probably more fully understand what this issue probably entails, rather than just go out to the public and now we're trying to educate them, and we should if we do that matter. But I'm, I'm really torn on this one, Mr. Chairman. I probably personally would not vote in favor of it if I were to vote at the ballot, because unless there's an overwhelming reason, and no one has, has given us one. They're really, they've just said, well, that's because, well, with 31, other communities with 31%, that's not an overwhelming, you know, rolling rock down the hill that says, well, get out of the way, let's change before we get run over here. The state hasn't considered it amongst all, all their legal language and documents. So while I'm not saying it, it's time may not come, I'm not so sure now is, is that time? I haven't seen no overwhelming individual come forward with an argument that says, these are the five reasons you need to change from the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board. I'm sure at some point we will, maybe, if the right reasons come about, or if we're the last holdout and you say, you know, why are we doing this? But I don't take 31% of the communities as a, an overwhelming majority to start, you know, copying what everyone else is doing.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Plasko?
Yeah, if I, just briefly refer, answer that a little bit. I kind of agree, I think I mentioned that last week, that 31% is not a majority. I'm surprised that the, and it might be interesting to see what happens Saturday when the Selectmen's Association considers what they're going to change.
Agreed.
Since two-thirds of their membership has not done it yet. But, but it is happening. It's happening with these organizations, it's happening with these towns. There's more towns pending. And as far as the state has not changed state law, like they haven't gone into the Section 4, I believe it is, where they define selectmen in the towns will have a Board of Selectmen. But they have approved all 86 of those towns changing their name. Those have all had to go in one form or other, depending on the vehicle the town used, to the legislature for approval. So they are allowing and endorsing this change.
Okay, let me ask this, if there's no further questions. You made a motion?
I did, how I will.
Will you repeat the motion or give us a motion?
To place a non-binding referendum question in accordance with master in law, 5318A, seeking the public's opinion on whether or not they favor changing the title Board of Selectmen to Select Board on the April 6 election.
Thank you. Do I have a second on that motion? Mr. Plasko, it appears that I do not have a second, so we defeat that right at this moment.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure we'll come back up again at some appropriate time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so do the board want to have the discussion on whether or not you want to put it forward at town meeting?
Perhaps in the future, we'll continue with the agenda.
I think that's one of the.
We can bring that up again. The idea of bringing it up to town meeting certainly can be on another agenda and discuss week, because we have time.
It's 120 days away.
The April election was more timely than if we're going to discuss it now, we start discussing it. Thank you.
Thank you all. So we've had a discussion on the, the name change, and we'll move on to the managers' update, if I could. Mr. Manager?
Selectmen's Minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Number seven, Selectmen's Minutes for Approval of the Board, meeting minutes from October 15th, 22nd, 29th, 2019.
Motion approved as written?
Have emotional approved, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous? Mr. Manager, your update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One sad note to announce with the board, I believe you received a copy of a letter today. Thomas McQuaid, our Director of Finance, our Chief Financial Officer, has submitted to me a letter that he intends to retire shortly after the end of the fiscal year. He's looking at sometime in July or August. He is, of course, being the consummate professional that he is and giving us plenty of time to close out the year, to go through a search process. He will be irreplaceable. I've tried many things to get him to stay, most of which are above board and some that may not be, because we're certainly going to be sad to lose Tom, but it looks like he'll be retiring shortly after the end of this fiscal year.
Chairman?
Sir, Plasko?
Mr. McQuaid is serving basically in a, what today is a joint position. He's town manager as the chief financial officer and instructed as the town accountant to work directly daily under the general manager's supervision. But the town clerk, town accountant's position is in fact under the control of the selectmen. So I think we should also accept this letter with thanks for his service and file a copy of it with the town clerk.
Second?
Have a motion to accept and to file with the town clerk. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And on that, I want to thank Mr. McQuaid myself, because he is leaving sometime after the end of the fiscal year into the next fiscal year. So there will be a transition time there between one fiscal year to another. So that gives us plenty of time to get back on track again, rather than leave us hanging in the middle of everything. So I thank him for that.
And just, Mr. Chairman, on that, we, we certainly thank Tom for his years of service to the town in many capacities. Not to, I'm not sure what the phrase is, but not to get the next process going while he's still with us for the next six months. But I would like to get the board a letter in the next week or two with a proposal for finding a replacement for somebody who is irreplaceable. We do have to think to the town's business needs and as much as we want to kick him off as long as we can and not have him retire, I think at some point, unfortunately, he is going to retire, and we do need to be prepared to fill that position. And finance positions generally take time to fill. We also know that anyone we bring in, we're going to want them to be able to give a certain amount of notice. Again, we're truly blessed that he's giving us more than six months' notice and letting us know well ahead of time and able to plan. There's really not a better transition than that. So kudos to him for his years of service and for giving us time to make a smooth transition.
Right, we, it's nothing we don't have to hurry and make the wrong decision, we'll make the right decision over time.
Correct.
I'm sure the accolades will come at, at future meetings for Mr. McQuaid, so again, I thank him for what he's done for us.
And I'll get the board a memo next week or the week after on a plan for replacement.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Forfilling that position.
Thank you. Selectmen, do we have anything, Mr. Maloney?
Just, the Capitol Outlay Committee did meet this past January 15. Out of custom with our usual practice, we kept the meeting to only one hour, not the usual three.
We're just going to have more.
Please. And Mr. Mazuka says we have to have more of those. Our next meeting is in early February, but we have new unanimous membership, attendance, rather, of the membership. And we reviewed the Capitol Plan that the town meeting passed in May and began the discussion of some future projects that we might add to the existing plan as we look forward. So more to come on that. I want to thank everybody who attended and those who have commented since via email. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We in the board were in receipt of a letter today, as were other town officials, from our registrar, Mr. Bill O'Donnell, telling us that under the Community Preservation Act, we will be getting $91,890 for the state contribution to us for that this year. As people may recall, we do have sort of an assessment that's incorporated in the real estate tax of 1% that, that also accumulates money on the town's benefit from this. So this, this is a good thing, it's $91,000. It's, it's more than some towns and less than a few of the towns. So it's a good thing for us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Plasko?
I think I've said enough this evening, thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Haja.
A couple of things, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just some housekeeping. The packages that we received from, from Tony with regards to the low-value properties that we may want to think about. And then the second one was the pocket parts. Are we going to bring those up for discussion? Next week?
Mr. Manager is telling me next week.
Within the next few weeks, we'll, we'll have it on our board agenda. It's floating around in the queue.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like the pocket part thing on the agenda next week. Is that possible?
We can do that for next week, yeah. Really, we just have a couple of potential sites at the board to start the discussion on.
You've already given us your paperwork, right? It's up to us to look it over and come back to you.
Sure, I just want to make sure we have images ready to go up on the screen so we can start a dialogue on it. But we can have that ready for, for next week if you'd like.
28.
Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney, thank you, Mr. Manager, and Mrs. Bobbale will take care of that for next week.
And the second thing is, I just want to say that I had the extreme honor and pleasure of attending the Tony Awards last night, and I didn't want to bring the list because I would probably butcher half the names. But it's amazing, out of the 24 nominees, that they, we could even find 10 out of them. They all were very deserving of their awards. And my congratulations to all of the nominees, not just the winners, for doing some excellent work in this town, volunteering for different programs,